Welcome, everyone, to our special city council meeting on Tuesday, December 11, 2018. We're located at the Veterans Memorial Hall. Our meeting is starting at 4:30 for the record. All members of council are present. We do have a quorum, and we'll call the meeting to order. This is a special meeting, so the formality is a little bit different, but we have two items on the agenda. And we'll start off with public comment for items on the agenda at this time. Is there anybody for public comment? Seeing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back to council. First up, item number one, and this is Short Term Fiscal Emergency Plan. Mr. Collins, you're going to introduce the item? Ms. Callaway?
Good evening, thank you. This is the fiscal -- short-term fiscal emergency plan. We started this process back in the end of August where we brought forward a timeline for completions so we could do that by the end of this calendar year. Just to kind of go over quickly what that process was, in early September, we met with our employee budget group to identify economic triggers that would stimulate action under the plan. Those five triggers were identified. They're highlighted in the report. September 18th, we met with our Citizens Finance Advisory Committee, brought forward those five triggers. The committee at that time agreed with, by consensus, to the triggers as proposed and also recommended that we somehow outline and quantify what the impact would have to be in order for a trigger to be met. September 25th, we brought those to council, and by consensus, council agreed to the triggers as presented. Then in October, we began to identify mitigation measures. That's the action that would be taken should one of the triggers be met. Again, we presented those, went to the employee budget group, identified six mitigation measures, discussed those with the Citizens Finance Advisory Committee in mid-October, and brought those forward to council in the first meeting in November. Based on the discussions with the employee budget group, CFAC committee, and the council, we tried to capture all of the comments in the final plan as drafted. The triggers, I mentioned, the CFAC committee and council agreed that there should be some kind of quantification of a dollar amount that would activate the triggers. We did incorporate that in here, and are proposing that should any trigger exceed $50,000, that would mean the trigger was met, and action under the plan would start to take place, and the city manager would have to come up with a plan and a recommendation. We picked $50,000 with the intent that it be significant enough to warrant action. On a day-to-day basis, we're monitoring the budgets. If anything less than that, we would, of course, realize internally and administratively have conversations about how we could mitigate those, but maybe wouldn't warrant action under a fiscal emergency plan if it was less than that. There was a seventh mitigation measure was proposed by the council, and that was an assessment and determination if the financial condition warranted a long-term approach. We added that to the plan as drafted. Also, it was recommended that the fourth mitigation measure to review operating costs that were one-time be changed to ongoing operating costs, as well as incorporating the concept that when the city manager comes forward with action under this plan, there be a fiscal amount associated with the trigger, how much was the impact, and how much is the other mitigation measures going to resolve that impact. So we incorporated language in the plan to address those comments as well. The plan is outlined to provide a little bit of background, a little bit of background from city council's actions with hiring management partners and progressing along this path of developing these plans and doing fiscal accountability and transparency for the community and long-term financial planning. There's a framework and strategy in place. It's really trying to incorporate the employees and the community being involved and being transparent and aware of what's happening. It's a policy-based approach to the decisions that are made, and it reflects the city's values. So all of that's kind of been incorporated in the plan as proposed. We also included language that this is not to exceed, any action under this plan would not exceed 90 days unless council approves an extension of that when the city manager reports back as to how the mitigation measures are meeting the impact of any triggers that occurred. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them. There is a new policy that I handed out to the council beforehand, and there's copies in the back for the public. It's redlined. Council member McPherson had a few edits that I'm sure she could talk to, some grammatical, and then I had language on travel and training chill that preceded what was in the final draft presented in November. So we corrected that and wanted you to have a cleaned-up version that you could adopt with the resolution, should you choose to do so.
Thanks, Jen. And with that, since we've concluded public comment, we'll go to questions for council, and then following that, we'll go to deliberation. Red, do you want to start us off?
Yes, I don't have any questions.
Matt? John?
Thank you, Ms. Callaway, for another great presentation. Having seen this before in detail, totally understand. I just had a couple of quick questions for clarification for me. In your document, Agenda Page 10, could you help me understand, like, for a natural disaster where it says estimated expenses exceed $50,000 in the given fiscal year, what specifically that means and how I interpret that? I'm not quite sure I get it.
Sure. So should any of the five triggers that are outlined, and if we're using the example of a natural disaster, that were to occur in October, for example, and the natural disaster was deemed to have caused damage in excess of $50,000, so let's say $75,000, that would trigger the plan to be invoked. The city manager would look at the mitigation measures, come up with a plan, present that to council, and come up with $75,000 in mitigation to, you know, recover those losses or that unexpected cost that the city would incur. And that would be for any of the other four as well. Should two of the three revenue sources that are identified be trending below expectations over two quarters and trending below $50,000 or $50,000 less than we had anticipated, the plan would be triggered?
Great, thanks. That helps me understand it. Just as a practical example, and a second question, if the gas tax had been repealed and our portion that we thought we would have received was about $250,000 and we would have not received that, realizing that this plan also involves the enterprise funds, would we have implemented this within that enterprise fund or organization-wide, or how would that work? Or would that have worked?
So that would have triggered because it was in excess of $50,000. Would have met trigger number three, state takeaways of local revenues. The city manager and staff would have done an assessment of what that would mean and come back to council. Being that it is a capital project fund, it would probably be a little bit different of a recommendation than had it been a general fund revenue source. However, it still would warrant a conversation and a recommendation from the city manager under the plan.
Okay, and it doesn't necessarily mean that all the high-risk, or excuse me, the mitigation measures on page 13 would have been implemented, right?
Correct.
Kind of a menu of things that could have been done. Okay, great. That helps. The last question I had was on 11, and I'm sorry I didn't have time to look it up. Minimum fund balance, or reserve fund balance, is it 25% or 27.5%? I forgot.
Our new policy that was approved about a month ago, the minimum funding is 25% and the target funding was 28%.
Thank you.
Okay, Marleus?
Yes, well, I had an opportunity to just sit down with Jen and just go over. The main concern that I had was that there had been a change in the language related to the travel, and I see that she has put it back to any travel would need to be approved by the city manager as opposed to just travel for training. So if that was what we had originally looked at, was any travel. So that was my question. Thank you.
Okay. And my -- thanks, Marleus. And my question is in regards to number three on page four of 105 of the staff report. That's the CIP deferrals. Sorry, Jen, we didn't get together on this particular question, but, you know, I think we can get through it. In reading that, I imagine as we set CIP projects, for example, with the water and wastewater enterprise funds, as it relates to defined funds from Prop. 218 and those things, that wouldn't necessarily include that during this scenario. Could you explain?
Sure. What the intent behind that mitigation measure is if there's significant economic impacts to the general fund that may cause CIP projects that are generally funded to be deferred, we may be able to utilize city staff that are funded through the general fund to complete CIP projects in the enterprise funds if there's revenue available. So, for example, with the One Water Plan, if there's anything in the capital projects lists for One Water that we could use general fund employees to do, we may come back with a recommendation to reprioritize those.
Okay. So that would mean that the CIP projects for our water and wastewater that were designated would move ahead, and it would be our CIP projects in the general fund?
That could be the recommendation.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you. Those are all my questions at this point. And just to follow up with council member McPherson on the travel, because as it was redlined in this particular one, let me get to it. It -- so the strike on the handout is travel and then strikeout and training chill. So just to be clear on, what is the exact language of that?
The language that was presented originally and what we've changed it back to is there be a travel chill, so the city manager would have to approve all travel, which any travel that would involve training would naturally imply that the training would be approved as well. So we didn't want to limit training locally necessarily.
So in this handout, the ones that striked out, that's out, that's as is presented as we would be approving it tonight?
Those striked-out words would be eliminated, and that's what you would approve.
Okay, thank you. Okay, those are all my questions. And with that, Marleus, you want to start us off on deliberation?
Yeah, well, I want to thank you so much. I like the format. I like the way it's presented. It's clear, and we have already discussed the individual elements of it, and you already incorporated our comments, so I am ready to approve it and move forward.
Thank you. John?
Yes, thank you. I'm ready to move forward and approve it, and thank you, Jen, for, again, you and your group and our employees for putting this together. I think it's an example, again, of best practice within cities to have what I consider to be a mediocre negative impact plan for a financial response, and this is certainly indicative of that. Well-defined, and I appreciate the time and effort, and I'm ready to move forward and approve.
All right, Matt?
I too agree with Marleus and John. Jen, this is very clear, I think, going forward, and I think, Lord forbid if this ever does happen, I mean, it's very clear how it will work, so I also think it's good.
Thanks, Red.
I agree. Thank you very much, Jen.
Thanks, Red. I also agree with staff recommendation, and so that we have, this has come before us before, and we have had our advisory boards review this as well, so I'm ready to take a motion to approve the item as recommended.
I will move that council adopt Resolution Number 97-18 as amended, approving the city of Marl Bay's Short-Term Fiscal Emergency Plan.
Second?
We have a motion by Ms. McPherson, second by Mr. Heading. Any further discussion? None? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you. All right, next up, item number two. Eric, are you introducing the item?
I am.
All right, good, thanks.
Thank you. Let's hope this one goes as quickly as it used the last one. So item number two is approval of new master lease agreement for lease site 8788, 8788W with TLC Family Enterprises, based out of the RFP that we had on that site a couple of years ago. On your dais is about a four-page document, and some changes. In the interest of full disclosure, I missed a few things in the draft lease agreement that went into the agenda, and those are the redline changes that I'm proposing to put into the new master lease agreement, and I'll get to those both as I go through my discussion here, and then we can go through to the very end exactly what they are. And there's also some on the back table if anybody out in the audience needs them. Who knows? If you can make it work, let me know. So our purpose is to obtain council adoption of Resolution 9818, which approves a new master lease agreement for the subject lease site with TLC Family Enterprises. Thanks. I think I was holding it backwards. Staff recommending that council approves or adopts Resolution 9818, approving the new master lease agreement, or MLA as we're calling it, with TLC. A few acronyms in this staff report. Council could always elect not to approve this resolution and, yeah, resolution and master lease agreement and direct us accordingly. Fiscal impacts are many. Under the proposed lease, the minimum rent remains as it was under the previous leaseholder, which is $30,000 a year for approximately two years. That would be while the project continues to go through permitting and when it's under construction. After redevelopment and the project is completed, the revenues are estimated to be about $40,000 to $50,000 for the first two years with the percent rent concessions proposed. Estimated new general fund revenues up to about $40,000 a year from TOT with the new hotel arrangement, and about $3,410 a year for the new parking space lease, much like we had with Rose's Landing with the parking spaces up behind Estacio on the public lot. Estimated new T-bid revenues of about $12,000 a year. And then after about three to five years and the businesses have stabilized, estimated harbor fund revenues should be in the $80,000 to $90,000 a year range, provided the site performs as anticipated. And then commensurate sales and major Q tax increases with, as it is now, where we had restaurant and retail, we're now going to have restaurant, retail, and hotel, so increased use of the site should bring additional revenues in those regards. And not in my PowerPoint, but in the staff report, could have a temporary decrease in revenues due to $25,000 valet parking concession proposed, much like we did with the Rose's lease site as well. That is actual costs incurred, if there's any cost incurred for the tenant to implement a valet parking system if needed. So this lease was an old, long-term lease that expired in March 2018. In August 2017, TLC was granted a consent of landowner, COL, approval to redevelop the lease site out of the RFP as I spoke earlier. April this year, council approved an interim master lease agreement with TLC to occupy and manage the site during the planning and permitting process. That interim master lease agreement expires tonight. As you know, we extended that about 40 days based on where they got through the planning commission on their project, so we had to move that into December 11. To date, all the consent of landowner milestones have been met, including the project obtaining concept plan approval from Planning Commission and City Council, and this proposed new lease agreement is a result of negotiations with TLC and going back to council in closed session in a couple of different times. So the proposed new agreement is based on the city standard lease template as always and includes the following highlights. Section 1.01, the term, 50-year lease commensurate with $3.6 million investment and degree of redevelopment. This site, as we know, is a complete scrape to the ground and start over in land and water, so that lease would expire in 2068, November 2068. Section 2.01 is the minimum rent. Annual minimum rent, again, is under the previous leaseholder for approximately two years, subject annual CPI adjustments, and then it'll go to the normal five-year reappraisal based on 8% of the appraised value property or 75% of the average rent paid over the last five years. Section 2.02, CPI adjustment to annual minimum rent. This is one of the areas that I inadvertently left out of the lease that's in your staff report. It puts a 3.0% CPI cap, much like we did on the Boatyard and Otter Rock leases. It also has a stipulation that if the CPI increases or decreases by 6% or more, will only increase above or below 3% by half the difference between 6% and what it actually is. Because of, once the percent rents kick in on this lease site, however, the minimum rent really should be moot because this percent rents will eclipse any minimum rents even at the normal full market value. It's anticipated that it'll be way above minimum rents. Percentage rents, these are where generally the concessions are on any lease, as they've been in many of our other leases. These concessions are based on, again, negotiating with the tenant and parameters in which I got from city council in closed session. There are no perfect comps on the waterfront. We try and weigh and measure based on the level of development and the size of the lease site, what other folks were issued for concessions, and try and make our best estimate on what makes sense for the lease site and based on what the tenant requests, and we end up hopefully meeting somewhere in the middle, and this is where we are. So for the first two years, all percent rents will be 2% except the slip rents, which would remain at 10%. That's another, basically everything in italics are the things I need to change that are on your dais in that document. I hadn't put that the slip rents will remain at 10%, so first two years, everything's at 2% until two years after the certificate of occupancy is ready to be issued. So basically, once they get the COA or COO to occupy the site and get revenues generating, they've got two years to remain at 2% on everything. And then once that time period's over, everything reverts to normal percents. Retail, transient occupancy, meaning the hotel and convenience food, the yogurt window would be 5%. Restaurant beer and wine sales, 3%. Beer and wine sale, we negotiate a reduction in that, much like we did with Rose's Landing in recognition of the higher cost and smaller margin on those items. With a six-seat bar, I don't anticipate that's going to be a large component of their overall revenues, but we did agree on that concession. And then vessel slip and tie-up fees and liquor at the bar remaining at 10%, and then all other sales, if any other things develop on that site, if they get other permits to operate other uses there, they would generally be at 5%. Permitted uses will be consistent with the permitting that's in progress, that include restaurant, bar, food service, convenient takeout food, retail, transient occupancy, and vessel accommodation. And again, if they wanted to add a use later, they'd go through either a temporary use permit or a minor use permit, or even a conditional use permit change if that came to pass. Section 13.01, staff had misnumbered this section as the redevelopment section in your staff report lease, so the actual real 13.01 is the tenant's requirement to maintain at least public restroom on the site during normal business hours. Section 13.02 is the tenant's obligation to redevelop the site, basically memorialization of the approved concept plan, including the minimum investment requirement and performance triggers as follows. Performance trigger A, obtaining evidence of adequate financing noted later than August 1st, 2019. The revised consent of landowner originally stipulated this date as April 10. The problem with April 10 is going to be the project really won't be far enough along in the permitting process to get anything more from a lender than what they have now, which is basically a letter of interest. So it really needs to get through precise plan, coastal commission permitting, precise planning, to get to a point where a bank can do an appraisal on it and they can determine whether or not they're going to lend on it. So we've proposed that that date be moved up to August 1st, 2019. Item B, file for coastal development permit, no later than January 8, 2019. I believe they've already begun this process. If not, apply for the coastal development permit, so that's underway. Obtain this coastal development permit, CDP, and other necessary permits, no later than June 8 of 2019. File for precise plan review by the planning commission, no later than September 8, 2019. Hopefully, nothing comes back terribly changed from the coastal commission, but you never know. Item E, obtain precise plan approval, no later than January 8 of 2020. Item F, apply for building permits, no later than April 7, 2020. G, obtain building permits, no later than July 9, 2020. Commence construction, no later than December 9, 2020, and complete construction, no later than December 9, 2021. So giving them a year to complete construction. These dates were all based off the original consent of landowner, adjusted for the planning commission timing, when we couldn't get to planning commission in time for the original deadlines or in the consent of landowner. They were a study of basically working with the tenant and with Scott and his folks up in Community Development, making sure there's ample time in there to get through the permitting, but not so much time that it just allows for excessive lag time. So hopefully, these are achievable. Section 13.04 is the valet parking rent credit and the hotel parking spaces. Again, similar to the new master lease agreement for Rose's, provides a rent credit for up to 50% of the actual valet costs incurred, up to a maximum of $25,000 a year, subject to annual review and adjustment by the city. And then by way of a separate agreement with Scott's house, will be leasing eight parking spaces, up to eight parking spaces in the city's parking lot up at Market and Pacific Street for the same rate that Mr. Reddigan was renting for. And again, this section was misnumbered in your staff report. It was misnumbered 13.04. It really should be 13.03 in the lease. 13.04, the real section 13.04 is the tenant's financial participation in the Centennial Parkway Plan concept. As you recall, we required, council required the tenant to show participation in the Centennial project, even though that project is still in the pretty early planning stages. TLC committed to contribute up to $20,000 to assist the city with funding that project once that comes to be. And then finally, section 13.05, the liquor license. Again, this section was inadvertently left out of the original draft lease. This memorializes the city's commitment to support TLC's application for an on-sale general bona fide public eating place liquor license from ABC, which is available for government-owned properties. And basically, what that means is there's, ABC has a limit on the number of liquor licenses that they will allow to be in place at any given time. This type of liquor license is currently all taken. They're all used, but the government-owned properties are exempt from those liquor license caps. So with the city's support, TLC can apply for one and be exempt from those caps. And in conclusion, again, TLC's operated the site since April. They've paid their rent and fallen on time, managed the site in clean and orderly fashion. I don't know if any of you have been down there, but it definitely looks better than it has over the last year or so. So we deem them a tenant in good standing. Due to the brevity of the interim lease, they've been unable to secure a subtenant for the defunct restaurant space. There's just too much work that needs to be done to fix that place up for the short amount of time that it'll exist. So they've been unable to secure any use for that space in terms of a restaurant. The redevelopment proposal obviously significantly upgraded and modernized the site, increasing both harbor and general fund revenues. Project includes LEED certification and significant area left to open usable public and view spaces, and we're recommending adoption of this resolution and approval of the MLA as presented.
And that concludes your report?
That concludes my report.
Okay. All right, since we've already concluded public comment on this item, we'll get into questions for council. And Marleus, you want to start us off with questions?
Sure, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Eric. I did meet with Eric this morning, so I did get many of my questions answered, but I'd just like to explore a couple issues, if you don't mind. First of all, could you explain the rationale for city contributing to valet parking? How would it work? Does it provide any kind of incentive for them to basically hire somebody who may not do anything? How will we know that we are, that it's fair or reasonable? So if you could just delve into that issue a little bit?
Yeah, great question. I'm going to pull up the lease and refer to the language as well. So as you recall from when we pursued this with Rose's, so far, the hotels within our waterfront have provided their own parking. Gray's Inn is a little bit different because they've lost a couple spaces, so they're looking at making that up somewhere else. But this is the first time any of our waterfront hotel proposals have come forward and that both tenants believe they need some dedicated parking to hotel usage. Doug's obviously is a remodel existing. He can't put hotel on-site. Anderson's put their hotel parking on-site. This site, dedicated largely by way of the RFP, and we wished that the city's requirement that open space be left open for the children's play area and whatnot, so they didn't maximize the building space or use up space for parking. They used up the space for open space and the children, what they're calling the children's play area. So the need for parking off-site became necessary here, and so that it's somewhat, we call it somewhat, at least with Doug's on Reddigan's, we called it kind of a bit experimental in that no one's known how much valet parking they may or may not use. Mr. Reddigan believes he's going to need a valet system, but until he gets the hotel up and operating, he's not going to know. So in order to get funding and make the project complete in terms of his lender's eyes, he wished to get valet parking, as does TLC for their project. So it's for actual valet parking costs incurred. It's under annual city review, and we as staff will It's under annual city review, and we as staff will be looking at it in sort of a meet and concur basis as well as the system is put up in place. To answer your question about how do we protect against abuse or somebody being hired just as a valet that's probably going to be sitting around not doing much if that's all their only job, again, I would look at that as sort of a meet and confer basis with the tenants and make sure that they're using somebody that's truly needed for valet parking. And until they put it in place, they're really not going to know. The ultimate trump card that we end up having is that we are able to sort of unilaterally dictate if we believe that the valet system is no longer needed, or it needs to be funded differently, or they need to join. Hopefully, what this results in is Rosa's Landing, TLC with this project, join together and co-fund a project for valet parking that will make it financially viable, as opposed to each of them doing it individually. And possibly even Gray's Inn as well, although they need a lot less parking. So that would be the hope in the long term, that they join together, if they needed at all. So again, the city's got the ultimate trump card, that we may impose changes if we believe some changes are needed, that either cutting back on the subsidy of it or persons not being used properly, we have a pretty heavy say in that.
Okay. But normally, valet parking would be considered a business expense, and I would assume that many high-end hotels actually charge for valet parking. So could we require that they actually do try to recoup the valet parking costs?
At least on Mr. and Mr. Reddigan's standpoint, and I believe on TLC's standpoint, they would intend on charging for that because when you get to the, you know, somebody that expects valet parking, it's usually a higher-end customer, and they're used to paying that and willing to pay that. So that would be our expectation that they would pay. And any costs recouped for valet parking would go against the amount that the city pays to subsidize a program.
Okay. And how does this lease compare to other leases on the Embarcadero, especially given 50 years seems a long time to me? And I know that historically, that's the way it's been, but it seems to me that businesses changed considerably, and the pace of change is faster, and 50 years is a very long time. So could you just compare this lease to other leases on the Embarcadero with respect to the amount of the investment and the length of the lease?
50 years is a long time. It's 50 years. It's not, there's a fair number of 50-year leases out there. Some of them started at 50 after redevelopment. I'll use Anderson's as an example. It started at 47 years. I don't know why 47 years was the number it landed on, but that's the number it originally was. Once they demolished the site, the San Simeon earthquake occurred, and then there's major changes in the code that required a bunch of structural changes that delayed them in time, and it increased their costs. So after they were built, they put in, I want to say, another 1.5 million than originally planned, and they got the extra three years to make it up to 50. Stan Trapp Marina Square on both of his leases, although his dollars of investment was considerably less than 3.6 million because it was 20-some-odd years ago, older dollars. But he had a lesser investment level from a dollar standpoint, but at larger scale. So he was granted 50 years. Doug with, Mr. Reddigan with Rosa's Landing, that eventually, it originally started as 40 years, and then eventually it creeped up to 50 with his extra new development he put on. Dutchman's, Flying Dutchman was 40, mid-40-odd years, I believe. I'm trying to think whatever, whoever else had major redevelopments. I think those are the primary ones.
And do we have any idea of how these terms might compare to other waterfront leases in other places? Is it typical to have such long leases?
It is. I don't, as we discussed today, I don't have a spreadsheet of lots of other leases in other places. And interestingly, we talked about that in our lease policy update meeting yesterday with our group and Mr. Lamelli. And we talked about putting together both policies and leases from other agencies and whatnot, just for comparison's sake. But, you know, 50 is the max and the state allows, and it's not, from my experience and anecdotally working with other agencies, it's not uncommon for development of this scale and this size to garner a 50-year lease.
And we are engaging in a lease policy discussion, which will hopefully be finished in the next six months or so. Are there other leases coming up in this period that you would need to negotiate without the benefit of a lease policy?
I am currently in the negotiating stage with both lease sites at Giovanni's Central Coast Seafood, down at the base of Beach Street. Kayak Horizons will be coming up, along with Gray's Inn. We've kind of put the little bit of a stall on Gray's Inn because they put a proposal in for Kayak Horizons, and it may make sense to combine those two. So those will be underway. Our water only leases to the south. Once we get those sites out to RFP, those will be coming up. And I think that is it. House of Juju, we've already gone to council, gotten direction. I've just got to queue that one up next. You'll be seeing that one come pretty soon. I've come to agreement and within the terms that we've brought to council. So those should be the only ones.
I'm guessing, and maybe you could just address the issue of, are there any advantages or disadvantages to entering into this lease agreement now, or waiting until we have a lease policy that would help to negotiate the terms?
Well, as we spoke today, I don't anticipate our lease policy is going to do any 90-degree right or left-hand corners or reversals of process or policy, or even rents. I don't see major, major changes to where we're going to whole cloth reinvent the thing. I think mostly what the policy is going to do is give us more guidance and direction on how to do this. You know, whether that's a formula, as we spoke earlier today, in an old San Diego Port District document I saw, they had a formula for determining how many years a lease should get, based on, it looked like something from Algebra II. It had like six different variables, and you entered them all in, and out pops a number at the end. If we had things like that for lease term and some other things, that would certainly take some of the subjectivity out of it and make it easier for me and for the council if it was a more determinate thing like that. It takes the variables out. But again, I don't, even if we come up with a formulaic way of doing some of those things, I wouldn't anticipate it's going to do a drastic change if for nothing else, we wouldn't want it to go hugely different from existing leases to not unlevel the playing field for our existing leaseholders.
Right, right. But is there any reason why we're doing it now as opposed to, let's say, in six months?
It's the timeline that we set in place probably a couple of years ago at this point.
Okay. But there is no, as I understand it, we are moving, the timeline has moved, and mostly, I think what we're mostly concerned about is really the applicants getting financing, and that we would hope would be sooner, the sooner the better. So is there any reason why it couldn't be stated that as soon as Coastal Commission has approved the project, for example, and there's enough of a project to take to a lender, if that happened before August 1st, wouldn't we want that to happen before August 1st?
Oh, absolutely. And I think their intent would be if they can get funded sooner, they'll get funded sooner. And all the timelines, they're going to be motivated to, because, you know, time is money, and the more time, the site is the way it is, and they're paying, you know, the rent they're paying for not a lot going on there. It's just costing them money. So the sooner they get going, the better for them. So they're going to be motivated to keep those timelines and get ahead of them if they can. Absolutely, always want to try and push them. My experience has always been, and that's why I worked with Scott in trying to come up with reasonable timelines with enough pad, you know, I've had enough of these things that I've put a deadline on there, and then we're coming back X number of months or years later and looking for an extension. I don't want to be looking for extensions. I want it to be realistic, and hopefully, we are at a realistic stage with the timelines.
Thank you, Eric.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Marloes. John?
Thanks, Councilmember McPherson, for covering a lot of the ground. And Eric, thank you for the report and the revisions to the report. A few questions that just prompted when Councilmember McPherson was speaking. When the Astero Inn was completed for approximately $3 million or so, how many years did they get on the lease initially? Do you recall?
I want to say 40. And then it was, I think they increased it five more, based on additional costs that were incurred during the project, a couple of years later.
If a lease is maxed out at 50 years, is there a disincentive to do capital improvements that might be desired by the city to gain more years on a lease if you're at max already?
I suppose there could be. If the site's being developed out to relative maximum capacity, I don't know what those additional changes would be. We're putting on this restaurant, retail hotel, some open space, new slip dock arrangement down on the water. The water might be the only place where they could potentially expand out, unless you wanted to go into some of the open space that they've already dedicated to open space. It's not a lot more room to get bigger.
It's just a general question. I wasn't looking for specifics. The general question is, does a city not have leverage with regard to negotiations for any improvements we might consider to be something that would be helpful, like the Harbor Walk, which doesn't apply here? But when that came about, additional years were given when lessees complied with Harbor Walk improvements.
Yeah. It could be, yeah. I get your point.
I'm trying to get it, yeah.
Yeah. If something came up in the future that we desired, that was a fairly significant investment, whatever that is, for some changes that the city does in its overall management or construction of these sites, yeah, I could, your point about us going to that tenant saying, hey, how about you build the blah-de-blah that we're all trying to build on our lease sites, and we'll give you another five years? Yeah. If it's at 50, we don't have that opportunity. Well, I shouldn't say we don't have the opportunity. If the lease is gone, if the lease is run five, six, seven, 10 years, you could renegotiate a new lease and increase the time on it again after that. That would be the way to do it.
Okay.
Which we've done on some lease sites.
Yes. Okay, great. On your staff report, page 1819, I just, and thanks for correcting that 13.01 versus 13.02. Your last paragraph on page 18, I'll just read it. In addition, the deadline by which TLC must show evidence of sufficient financing for the project was changed from April 10th to August 1st, 2019. That change is because in April, the project will understandably not have reached a point in the permitting process to be far enough along for lending institutions to make any more commitment than they already have, basically, which is an LOI.
Correct.
Says by August, the project, and I'm looking at the words, should be sufficiently defined. And then it says, and permitted to allow a lending institution to perform an appraisal on the project and property, and provide a, again, I quote, more definite financial commitment. Are we not looking for absolutes by that deadline? Is there a strict deadline by August 1st, 2019 to have approved financing in place?
Yes. The approved financing deadline, as opposed to being April 10th, and because we don't think they could get anything more than what they have now and be setting them up for failure, moving it to August 1st, when the project's more defined, would be when we'd be looking for definitely something more definitive from the council or from a lender in terms of conditional financing. And right now, they basically says, yeah, we're interested in lending you. Further down, a more definite, short of, you know, Uncle Charlie coming with a bag of cash, or them having a ton of money in the bank, a lending commitment at the next level is basically going to be conditional financing. That financing conditioned on them retaining a building permit or them maintaining some permitting or other step that the bank wants to see. But the bank basically says, your finance, provided you get your building permits.
Got it, got it. Great. Page 54 of the, again, the staff report, 34 of the document, and it's section 13.02, and I'll just read from page 54. It says, failure, and this is maybe both for Mr. Panoni and for you, failure to complete the project and comply with all conditions of the CUP, as evidenced by a final building permit inspection as required by city in its governmental capacity, in addition to providing proof of expenses, as evidenced by copies of invoices by the prescribed timeline, shall be a material default of the lease agreement and subject to any remedies outlined in Article 11, including termination of the lease. So my understanding in reading that, and I just want to be sure I'm clear, is that if the conditions not met in the CUP, which include financing by that date, are not met, then Article 11.02 applies. And in Article 11.02 specifically, it refers to the fact that there's a 30-day cure period. Am I to assume that in addition to, is my first assumption correct, first of all, that it would be a breach? And if so, would there be a 30-day cure, which would mean another 30 days to obtain, and I'm specifically referring to financing in this case, to get financing?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So that really extends the date to September, if indeed it were not obtained by August 1st?
Yes.
Okay, great. And then in the next paragraph, page 54, again, in the staff report in the middle, failure to obtain any and all required permits and approvals of the project shall not be a reason for failure to comply with this section. Joe, could you help me understand that? I'm not sure what that means. Failure to obtain any or all required permits and approvals for the project shall not be a reason for failure to comply with this section?
What it's saying is, they need to do what they need to do to get the permits. And if they don't get the permit because the Coastal Commission doesn't give them a permit, that doesn't mean somehow they're absolved from having to comply with the provision that says they have to have a permit.
Okay. Great, thank you. I thought that was it, but I wanted to make sure I understood it as such. And I think that concludes my questions. Thank you, Eric. Thanks, Joe.
Thanks, John. Matt?
Yeah, I have a kind of a piggyback question, Eric, and maybe for Scott. In terms of looking at all these expectations, how will these cost of COL triggers be monitored? And I guess John was leading up to it. What happens if there being, who, well, I guess, okay, that first question, who's monitoring these triggers? Is it you, Eric? Is it Scott?
It's going to be myself, city attorney, the financing one includes the finance director.
And so, and in terms of what recourse, and I guess this kind of builds upon what John is saying, in terms of recourse does a city have, if, as what's in the lease says, that if it's not being met, we're going to give more time, how much time? Is there any idea?
Well, as Mr. Heding just pointed out, the failure to comply with anything in the lease, subject to Article 11 or Section 11, which is the default section. The default section says, if you're in default, you've got 30 days to cure it. So if we declare, okay, you didn't get your coastal permit by whatever the date is, you've got 30 days per Article 11 to cure that default. If the default's not cured, then we go to termination.
Got it.
The only nuance to that is if the default is because they didn't make a payment of rent, then it's three days. It's not 30 days.
Okay. So there is leeway for the city to cover the bases here and make sure it's being followed through. And as to this point by now with the agreement with this group and this, have there been any sort of letdowns? Have we had to compensate for anything that they have not done? Or has everything been done up to speed?
On the site or just in general?
No, in general and on the site and on this project.
Well, the site, like I said, they believe they've done a great job in cleaning the place back up. As you know, the previous leaseholder took a lot with them and left a lot to be desired in terms of the state of the place. They've cleaned it up, especially that outer common area. They've performed, they paid their rent on time, they went and did a lot of cleanup, a lot of work, as they were supposed to in the beginning, to try and rent it out. They applied to Scott Shop to get a permitting, I'm not sure which, TUP or, to do temporary events in there, to try and hold some events, just because they tried to get some restaurateurs interested and just based on how much it would take to put into that place to get it going, they couldn't. So they decided to try and rent it out. And they've done, I think, a wedding and a couple of other events in there, and so they got permitting for that. So they've been trying to get a lease out, the trouble's just been nobody wants to go in there for such a short period of time.
Okay. That's all my questions. Thank you.
All right. Red?
Thank you. I just want to know about the reasonable expectation for the timeline on page 54 of 105 that we've been looking at. Have those dates been vetted with the agencies so that we believe that they are reasonable to meet?
The original dates from the consent of landowner document, which is where these were derived from, were a product of myself working with community development with Mr. Graham and through his expertise and experience and just knowing how Coastal and all the other agencies work, and including talking with Kathy Novak as well, who does a lot of these permits, just looking at the realistic nature of the dates and is it enough? That's where we came up with, and that's where I said I wanted to get dates in there that were reasonably tight, but not so tight that I'm just going to have to come back for an extension when some little hiccup in the road occurs, because I don't want to have to do that. So we believe that they are achievable and not, like I say, not too far out there, but not too tight.
Do you have any indication from the applicant that the applicant agrees that they are reasonable?
Yes. We worked with them. In fact, one of the dates we moved from, I think, the last, one of the final dates we put in there, instead of it being, I believe it was commenced construction, I think it was under the original consent of landowner, it was October of 2020, and we moved it to December because of timing with eelgrass, because of when you have to do eelgrass inspections and how long that inspection is good for. The timing works better for that, to push it out two months into December, so we moved those. Yeah, they were in concurrence with the applicant as well.
Okay. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thanks, Red. I think there's a lot of attention on this, the area on page 34 or 54 of the staff report, and a lot of it's been covered, so thanks for that. My question is for Scott Graham on page 34, which is 54 of our staff report. And item E, obtain precise plan approval from planning commission for the project no later than January 8, 2020. So, sorry, I misread that date. I was thinking that was 2019. So the very first one then would be January 8, 2019. That's the very, very first one, so there's, we don't have much control on that. So when I see these dates, and it could go all the way to, sorry, I'm getting to the question of, A, where on August 1st is there financing obtained? What's going to happen if we, if any one of these is missed and it goes to January 10th? Because I read this as black and white. It's got to be January 8th. And if it doesn't happen, then what?
Well, I'll say this. The staff report, I'm looking at the contract right now. If you see the parameters for the application, if you see the dates, you suggest that, so the ready to go, they may have already seen. If you see that clause.
Okay.
If you see the part, if you see the clause, if you see the last several weeks, if you see the package, if you see the, 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 if you see week, based mostly on a little bit more information that was, according to Kathy Novak, because we hired her to help us with this process, which I think is a great thing to streamline communication with coastal. So we got a couple more engineers on board to understand materials. So we gave a very full, concise application at the time without too much comeback from that. So we're really trying to be proactive with our application. And so far, Sarah's been very helpful with the process, and time is of the essence, so I know you guys want to wrap things up. So I just want to say good luck, and thank you for your service, Jamie and Matt. You will be missed. And congratulations to very soon to be mayor of Morro Bay, Mr. Heding, and happy holidays to all of you, and thank you again for your time.
All right. Sharice and Travis, thanks very much. And with that, we'll start with Red.
The, I know that we on council have been concerned since the beginning of the project about capitalization, the amount of money that the applicants need to raise to complete the project. And we have given them some pretty firm things to accomplish, and they have done everything that we have asked of them to this point. And so I'm satisfied to proceed with granting the new master lease, and certainly will be monitoring the timeline as we go along. And across my fingers, I admire the vision that Sharice has brought to the project, and I am happy that we have local developers participating on our waterfront. So I'm ready to proceed with staff recommendation.
Thanks, Red. Matt?
I too would like to echo on what Red is saying. I think our applicants have shown through this process, and it's been going on, and I realize that it's kind of nebulous in terms of what was there before, what's going to be there, and the timeframe. But however, they have shown in every step of the way. And I do believe with Eric and Scott, with these various triggers that are set in place, and knowing that, and hearing from the applicant and from staff, that they've already been moving ahead, I understand the concerns, but however, I would think that that's just, you know, part of business, but I'm very safe and secure with what the applicants have put down.
Thanks, Matt. John?
Thanks, Matt and Red. Appreciate your comments, and thank you. Didn't see Travis hop up there and talk. Hope you're recuperating well and things are healing for you. Thanks. And the financing has always been, obviously, a concern, and we've been very open, and that's why I tried to open that up in the contract to make sure that, obviously, that was aired, and I know you guys know that. So I appreciate that fact, and thank you for the offer to speak today, and I think we already were okay and knew. I didn't have any specific questions of you guys, I was very clear with what was happening. The two things that I think, one thing I don't think has to be memorialized, but should be considered, is that, you know, there should be a valet fee to offset some of the cost. That's traditional, no matter where you go, really, in big cities, small cities, where you have ADRs, charges, you know, commensurate with what you're going to expect. So it doesn't need to be in the contract for my approval, but I would highly suggest that to help mitigate the cost for that, because I think it's expected. I'm grappling with 50 years. I think we lose leverage as a community for other improvements, which we've consistently done and utilized to gain improvements, either ones that were mandated by coastal, like the Harbor Walk, or other improvements that might be ADA mandated, or other types of improvements that the city would mandate. And if we're already at 50 years and there's no incentive to move beyond that, I would be concerned about that. For financing, usually it's somewhere between 25- and 30-year lease. And so I would like to hear further discussion about the length of the lease potentially being too long, and I'd probably be more comfortable with somewhere between 30, 35 years as opposed to 50. So I'll leave with that and leave it open to debate.
Thanks, John. Marla?
Yeah, and I share Mr. Heding's concerns about the length of the lease, and I also, which is why I asked the questions about the valet parking, hope that we have not set a precedent where the city will pay for valet parking with other people who may want to build a hotel on the Embarcadero. So I'm hopeful that we can resolve that issue satisfactorily, so that eventually it's clear that it's a business expense that the city is not expected to pick up. I understand it's, it's an experiment, and I hope we monitor it carefully in the future and make sure that we kind of take ourselves out of that part of the business. I also, however, agree with Red and Matt that the applicant has done everything that we have asked. I, and for that reason, feel that we really owe it to them to go the next step, to understand and see if they are able to get financing. We understand that's the big hurdle, we understand that that's going to happen, and I was pleased to hear that they're as anxious to get that question settled as quickly as possible, because it's certainly in the city's interest and in their interest to know as soon as possible that they can capitalize this project and move forward. So those are my initial comments.
Okay, great. I will echo Councilmember Davis's remarks, and admirable, I know you guys are working hard on this, it is an admirable undertaking, it's a big undertaking. And so, you know, how many meetings we've gone through this, and, you know, I know it's difficult, just this process alone, and being scrutinized over every little detail, but it's what we have to do. And I think you all are taking a risk, and we're taking a risk, and we want to see things succeed. Having said that, I would support it, but I do want to highlight something Councilmember Heding said, which I actually have on my notes, and it has to do with a reopener after 30 years. And I just, so I guess I want to open up some dialogue on the concern over 50 years. And some of my thoughts, I think the 50 years is a necessity for financing projects of this magnitude. I think that's just going to be one of the things that any project is going to need. But after going through some of the lease projects that we have, Eric, and we've gone into some where, hey, it's locked into a Pipkin lease, right? We're in it all the way up to the very end. And to consider maybe a reopener after 30 years to, it's still a 50-year term, but the reopener, and I'm looking to you, Joe, to have some dialogue on this concept, the reopener would be some sort of reevaluation of the contract in terms of what's the vitality of the lease project, considering, you know, I think, having to do with maintaining the facility, and we've seen some of our lease projects as they go, it makes, it's understandable that we see some of the sites not as heavily reinvested because they're just getting to the end of their term. So I guess I'll look for you to have some feedback, Joe, on this concept of a 30-year reopener, not really understanding what we're going to get ourselves into in the conversation.
First, with regard to making sure the property is properly maintained, there's clear and sufficient language in the master leases to do that. It's a function of staff support and time to be able to police that, if you will. So I don't think, I don't think we need to have a 30-year reopener to make sure they're maintained. Any leaseholder is maintaining their property. I guess I would want to know, what is it that you would like to be accomplishing by that reopener? Is it that you'd want to have, if indeed in 30 years, the city wanted to see something done on the property, other than just maintenance, some additional improvements, you want to be able to negotiate with them? You could do that after year 10. It's a financial issue. You'd probably need to give them more credits in order to cover the cost to them, so they have a return on the investment that they make for those new improvements. So you don't, you don't need a 30-year reopener if that's what you're looking to do. So...
Okay. Any comments?
And as to the 50 years, if I may, sorry for interrupting, the 50 years, the term of the lease is just one part of the negotiation. If over that 50 years, you have a Harbor Walk or something you want them to put in, I'm sure they would be willing to do that if you come up with a financial reduction in what they owe you in order to have them pay it. So it's a matter of how much you're willing to give in credit for them to do something you want them to do, that they don't really have any financial need to do.
So it opens up a question if there are, and I don't know what might come down, but new laws, new regulations that mandate for improved assets on ground lease properties that have to be implemented. And I could make something up, but I won't do it. Just some new law is passed, and some change has to occur that requires a capital investment on their part. What I'm trying to do is limit the city's exposure, and understand how to limit the city's exposure for paying for that as a result of the fact that we're maintaining the ground lease and they're the lessees. So...
But their lease says they have to comply with all laws. So if a new ADA requirement comes up that says, even if you're not doing anything to your property, you have to do X, Y, Z, it's their obligation to do X, Y, Z at their cost, which is going to mean their profits may be lessened, but it's not something that you have to take a hit for. But depending upon your relationship and negotiation, maybe something you want to pay 50% of that cost. But that's a negotiation term, but it's their responsibility to fix it.
To do that. Right. And similarly, if there were improvements that the city desired, what we've done in the past, and I'm just using historically, what we've done with other lessees is to negotiate time. And so here, we have no time to negotiate because we're out at a max, more or less. So we're not going to say we're going to go to 60 years or 80 years. We're at 50 years, and pretty much that's it. And so my concern is, are we limiting our ability to leverage improvements the city might want to see, and being able to grant more time by reserving that time now for potential improvements that might come later that we would like to have entertained? And that's across the board with all lessees that I say that.
As I would say it, all you're doing is taking one of the arrows out of your quiver. Your quiver has a lot of arrows in it. One of them is a term, the other one is you'll agree to reduce their minimum rent by $500 a month for some period of time to cover that cost for them to do that project.
Okay. Unless there's... I think I feel better, and I want to just let the applicant know, this is really not specific to you, this is across-the-board issues that we're seeing in leases, and so I want you to know that. It's just things that keep coming up, that as new leases come onboard, I personally want to make sure we're very clear with regard to the language and what we're able to do as these new mandates come. And so I'm good with that then. Thank you.
Joe, I think you've answered my question, and I'm good to go. Would entertain a motion at this point? Were there more questions or comments? Marla, do you have comments? I'm sorry.
I just want to thank John and Jamie for bringing up the question about the length of the lease, and what I've heard from Joe makes me comfortable with what we're doing. So I will go ahead and move that council adopt resolution number 98-18 approving a new master lease agreement for lease site 87-88/87W-88W as proposed.
As amended by the document this evening.
As proposed and amended by the document given to us by the harbor director this evening.
So we have a motion by Councilmember Davis, staff recommendation with the amendments as presented by our harbor director, seconded by Councilmember Makwetki with amendments. All good? Okay. Any further questions, discussion? None? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? Motion carries 5-0. Okay, great, everybody. With that, unless there's any concluding remarks, we can adjourn the meeting. Any concluding remarks? Anybody? None? Okay.
Just thanks to the applicants for being here, both, or I should say, all, one and a half of them.
Right. Thanks. Meeting's adjourned. We'll take a short recess, and we'll be back at 6 o'clock for our regular city council meeting. Thank you.